Good morning, everyone. Today is Monday, May 10, 2021. The time is 10:05 a.m. This is our weekly Commissioner's Status Update. Attending Commissioners Duncan Brooks and Filios. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, item number two will be handled next week.
Okay, so we're striking item number two, deferred until next week. Then before I proceed with the agenda, I would also like to welcome our EMS chief, Bill Keely, and of course, our Director of Administration, Tracy Abramson. They'll be presenting their annual report just a little bit later in our meeting. Welcome. Okay, first item, Board of Equalization Training Updates.
Yeah, so last week I attended an all-day training, and it was a great refresher. And I was able to put some notes together, and so I just wanted to go over them real quick.
Please.
And I can also give them to you via email if you are interested. So a reminder, the starting point is the assessor is presumed correct in these BOE hearings. A preponderance of the evidence by the appellant is what tips the scale.
Wait a second. Can you pick it up? I think you're faint.
Hello? Go ahead. Okay.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
So 51% of the evidence by the appellant is a lot less scrutiny than like a regular court case. So for missed deadlines, PTR, which would be the property tax relief and tax exempt status, the homeowner's exemption would fall into this category, except that's been changed now by the legislature.
389, right?
Right. So when the B.O.C.C. denies these items, the BOE is actually their due process. So the BOE has the authority to adjust the valuation to include those exemptions. So before, we had denied them based on the date, which is appropriate, but we can approve them based on the value. So for instance, if a church misses the deadline, we can't approve them by changing the deadline, but what we can do is reduce their value to zero because they are a tax-exempt entity, if that makes sense. So I think that this board had failed to do that, at least I know in my mind. I can think of a couple instances where we did this. Of course, we want to make it clear it's a one-time exemption because we don't want to encourage repeats of that. But I think the biggest point is it is due process for the B.O.C.C. denials. Commissioners who have firsthand information regarding a property being appealed, that commissioner should recuse themselves. So that's just a reminder. If no representative appears at an oral appeal, the case should be heard as a written appeal. And so we shouldn't be dismissing cases for failure to appear. We should be assessing the assessors, I mean...
As written?
Yes, approving the assessor's value as written. Okay. Let's see. We are going to probably have some property damage claims. So the period that the people were without use of their property, that's what we can focus and change the value on, just for that period that it wasn't. Now, I know some houses were destroyed so badly that it may end up being, you know, six months to a year. So we'll take it case by case. And it was suggested, I'm not sure how well it would work for Cootney County, but it was suggested that we, the B.O.C.C., could ask for documents ahead of time. So we would have to talk with the assessor's office to see if that's the case because what happens is the appellant, and sometimes the Board of Commissioners or the Board of Equalization, get the packets the day of instead of the day before. And so it's very difficult for the appellant to have this information so late in the game and to be able to refute it. So, and same thing with the assessor. We want to make sure that any backup document that the appellant has also gets to them on time because if they bring in comps, the assessor doesn't have time really in the meeting to address the comp situation.
Good point.
So we can, I'm happy to talk with your staff, Reba, and decide whether or not that that can happen because if we can get them two days in advance on both sides, I think that's a better due process way to handle things. And then the last reminder, where not to negotiate, compromise, or mediate. Either the assessor is right, or the appellant proves their case. So that's about it. And like I said, I can give you a email or copy of my notes.
Okay, Gray, please.
Can you get a copy of those as well?
Yes, absolutely.
Got it. So the decision is binary, okay. No negotiation, no gray.
No, but it's, I mean, you have to determine if the homeowner is saying zero and the assessor is saying 200. I mean, obviously, we're not going to rule in favor. If they didn't prove their case is zero, then...
Then it's 200.
What they did prove maybe was, you know, 100 or something.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, so it's, so by saying that, though, either the assessor is right or the appellant does prove their case. It doesn't mean that we have to go with the appellant's value. That's something that has to be proven, I guess is what I'm saying.
Understood, okay. But we shouldn't get involved in a negotiation?
Correct, yeah. How do you guys feel? How do you feel? You know, that's not our job.
Fair enough. Thank you. Very informative, appreciate it. Okay, item, what was item number two has been stricken. Item number three, trespass county, trespass on county property in Cataldo. Go ahead, Leslie. Oh. This is our deputy...
Nick, are you on the line yet?
Yes, Commissioner.
Oh, good.
Go ahead, Jamila, Deputy Civil Prosecuting Attorney. Jamila Holmes, go right ahead, please.
Thank you, Commissioners, good morning. I would defer factually to everything that Mr. Snyder is about to give you as far as background on this property.
Okay.
What I've done is draft a proposed letter to the property owner. And so the property at issue is owned by an LLC, and so I drafted the letter to that owner and their registered agent. And ideally, what we would do is trespass that owner and their invitees from the county property that's next door to theirs. And any subsequent trespass would then amount to a misdemeanor per the county code. So they've been ordered off of the property at a recent event. Nick has spoken with the owner on a couple occasions, and this letter would then formalize, and we would send it by certified mail, would formalize that order, that they be trespassed from the county property that abuts theirs.
Okay, so as I read this, am I reading it correctly to say that they have to vacate by May 31st? Not vacate, but remove the...
So it's my understanding that the event, the vendor market that took place was scheduled for April period, May 1st. When Mr. Snyder learned of it, he asked that KCSO...
Take appropriate...
Yeah, look into what was happening and take appropriate action. And so for that event, the trespassers were ordered to vacate by noon the following day. But it's also my understanding that the owners have a number of events and regularly scheduled events on this property. So it's very likely that although they were ordered to leave for that event, that this could reappear.
Okay.
So I know that they, that there is a permit process. If they are trespassed, does that prevent them from going through the permit process?
I think that the county code likely gives the director, Mr. Snyder, a lot of leeway and a lot of flexibility in that sense. This letter would be ordering them off of that property. If they thereafter make an application for a commercial use permit, I don't think that Nick is prohibited from lifting this order and granting that use permit in the event that that's appropriate.
Thank you. Nick, any comments?
No, I think Jamila has covered it, Commissioners. I would say that the facility itself doesn't really lend itself to our staff being able to properly manage it and keep an eye on it. It's clear out of Cataldo. It's not a classic park that, or a picnic shelter that where we would typically host an event. And I did explain that to the owners on several occasions, but essentially, it's a large parking lot. Not that for a one-off event, maybe once a year, would be something we could work with them, and I had told them that in advance, but to accommodate the regular events just as impossible in terms of staffing and the facility itself and to really encumber private property, or excuse me, public property for private for-profit on a regular basis isn't, you know, the best use of that property. So to Commissioner Duncan's question, the answer is absolutely. In most cases, Commissioners, you know, we're happy to help, and I told them that. Again, it's kind of a one, once-a-year kind of event, but I don't think that that's their business model. And hopefully, this letter will just solve the issue moving forward. Again, I'm willing to have a conversation, and certainly, I think the Board of County Commissioners needs to weigh in on whether or not, you know, regular use of a public property for profit is the right direction here. But unfortunately, this is where we're at today.
Nick, another question. Would this property, do you ever foresee this property being up for sale?
I could answer that, Commissioner.
Well, part of...
Go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, I'm going to defer, I'll defer the legal, the legal answer to that to council, but essentially, it's flood mitigation property that the county received back in the 90s, and I don't think that we can put that property up for sale.
Correct, correct. It was deeded to the county as part of a flood remediation project.
Okay, okay.
And so there are a lot of restrictions on use of all of those properties down there.
So Nick, what is your plan going forward?
Well, Commissioner, essentially, you might recall, we did some remediation work there about two years ago, and it's a public parking lot. It's all intensive purposes for people to access the river. Our plans are to leave it as such. We have it posted, no camping or overnight parking, but it is open to the public to use for day use along the Coeur d'Alene River, and that's the long-range plan. It's not, these properties aren't classically in our inventory in that Parkson Waterways manages it for the county commissioners. And so it is remediated. It's just three-eighths gravel crushed, and it's an open parking lot. So also, because of flood mitigation, we are not allowed to put any structures on it. So we can't develop it as we would a classic park or other waterways-type facility. It must remain as it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fair enough. Thanks, Nick. Bill, any questions?
None.
Okay. Item number four. Oh, Jamila, I'm sorry, forgive me. Sure.
Could I ask for a board direction to go ahead and finalize this letter and send it out?
Yes, please.
Bill?
Yes.
You got three.
Thank you. Bye, Nick.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Item number four, Pending Item Status Review from the Attached List. So let's run through them. First is the project for the alternate or optional form of county government study commission. Bill?
It's ongoing tomorrow night. There's a meeting, kind of an initial meeting that Nancy has pulled together to inform people in terms of the open meetings law and... What?
Public records.
Public records and just housekeeping and bookkeeping, things that they must do to be compliant.
And let me see, do we, and so the resolution is on the agenda for tomorrow's business meeting, is that correct? Okay. Thank you. Facilities expansion, Leslie?
So no change from last week. May 13th and 14th, LCA will be meeting with Corey Trapp for the long-range plan.
Okay. Airport lease for Panhandle Area Council?
Steven said that he's still waiting to hear back from Wally.
The reason I'm laughing is it's been going on for years, I think. Anyway, 1A, 1B audio upgrade for this room. Nancy, we're on schedule. We begin, is it the first or second week of June?
June 14th to the 18th.
6:14 to the 18th. So we're going to revamp the audio video. Wonderful. Financial snapshot, Deana, you gave us that last week, so the next one is scheduled for the first Monday in June, okay? Ballot bond language, Leslie?
Yep, so the legislature passed some property tax relief, and we're waiting to see if the governor signs it into law. And that's the same with the building financing. So once we have some more solid numbers to go forward with, then we can start talking about timelines.
Okay, and by the way, I wrote the governor, and I asked him, since we have such a handsome surplus, if he wouldn't mind helping us out with the $20 million bill for the new building. I can't imagine he's going to be chopping at the bit, but I didn't tell you about the first half, which deals with my view of HB 389, but that's a whole nother matter, okay? Okay, so the building financing, that's one in the same, really?
Yeah, it is.
Okay. This goes along with the ballot bond language, okay. Anything else on status update? Okay, so that concludes our item number four. And so we move on to item number five, welcoming Chief Bill Keely and our Director of Administration, Tracy Abramson. And this is a recap of the 2020 EMS, Cootney County EMS, and a discussion of the fee increase with EMS chief Bill Keely.
Commissioners, thank you for giving us time. As Commissioner Philios said, we are here to do two things, do a recap of 2020 and then discuss with you our situation around fees. This comes out of, I'm sorry, I can usually multitask, but trying to type my password...
Yeah, no, go right ahead.
...and talk is probably going to get me in trouble, so I'm going to do one before I do the other. So as you are aware, Cootney County, Board of County Commissioners is the ambulance district as part of the master provider agreement with Cootney County EMS and our providers to provide EMS in the county. One of the lines, as we revamped the master provider agreement last year, it had been in place since Cootney County EMS was created 25 years ago. We did a lot of updates about how we function now, what we do differently. Part of that is that EMS is supposed to give an update to the county commissioners each year. We've always interpreted that as a financial update, which we obviously do a budget and all of that. But one of the things when I was prime of the chief last year that I looked at was there's more to us than the money that we get. So I wanted to kind of get together this annual report, and though I obviously have shared it with my Joint Powers Board, I want to share it with you. We are going to have several copies of this bound and have available to give to the public. We're going to put it on our website and all that. This is really meant for the public to explain EMS because Cootney County is an interesting system in the way we provide EMS compared to the rest of the state. And most people don't understand why guys in fire department uniforms show up to take care of them, but they get a bill from Cootney County EMS. They're getting a bill from the county, but they're not getting a bill for it. And it's very confusing. So we took this opportunity to kind of say, hey, this is who we are, this is what we do, and this is why we're important. So as we go through this, we kind of start with what's out there. Cootney County EMS with our fire department providers, we run six paramedic-level ambulances every day. They're staffed 24/7, 365. Two of them are with Coeur d'Alene Fire, two of them are with Northern Lakes Fire, two of them are with Cootney Fire. Then we also staff three EMT-level ambulances, one with Sevres Lake Fire, one with Timberlake Fire, one with Worley Fire. And then Cootney County EMS supports all of the fire department responses within all of those agencies, as well as we contribute to the EMS response with Hauser Fire, Micah Kanalon Fire, and with Eastside Fire. We also have a relationship with Harrison Ambulance that we financially support them to cover the southern half of the, the southeastern half of the lake. And then we also have an agreement with Shoshone Fire District 2 to provide EMS along the Cataldo Highway 3 corridor that's in Cootney County. And then we supply the paramedics to both Harrison and to Shoshone in those corridors. So through our relationships, through everything we do, we're providing EMS through the entire county as dictated by the code that created us. Our vision statement, our mission statement, that's me, I'm unimportant in the larger scheme of things. There are actually only six employees at Cootney County EMS. Myself, obviously. My Director of Clinical Services, Chief Rodney Geilenfeld, he is in charge of everything to make sure we do everything we do medically correct. He works with our medical directors, who are part-time employees or contract employees with our district. He reviews everything that happens. He writes all the protocols. He does everything that needs to happen so that medically, we are in line with the legal situations that we need to meet. Next is my Division Chief Scott Higgins. Scott is in charge of everything that we own. He is in charge of all the ambulances, keeping them on the road, keeping them running. That is quite a chore at times. He's in charge of all of our capital equipment to make sure it continues to function correctly. All the testers are not in it. We meet a plethora of state and federal regulations by doing, by updating everything. He is in charge of all of our narcotics and medications and the tracking of narcotics and medication by federal rule. He handles everything that does not involve us providing direct care to a patient. Tracy's sitting next to me. Tracy is in charge of budget and making sure that our administrative office functions the way it should. Tracy's the number lady, as we effectively refer to her as. Her biggest, we, all of our billing is done through an outside agency. Our billing is done through an agency in Western Washington. I get the question all the time, why don't you hire someone locally? Ambulance billing is a huge subspecialty of Medicare and Medicaid. There is no one locally who even provides the service, let alone is good at it. So we have to, we had to go outside and systems design in Western Washington, put in the best RFP for the contract, and has been our billing company for eight, nine years, and we're very happy with that. And then we have two administrative assistants. Amy works for the clinical side. She works for Scott and Rodney. And then Tara works for Tracy in the financial end. And that is Cootney County EMS. That's all we really are. We have eight more contract employees that provide a level of service that I'll talk about in a minute, the critical care program, but they are part-time home-call contract employees. You all know our Joint Powers Board. They are made up of the agencies that are part of the system. Commissioner Rick Evers from Coeur d'Alene is our president. Commissioner Dolefield from Cootney County Fire and Rescue is the vice president. Commissioner Hal Fims represents Northern Lakes. We have Commissioner Setsmith, who represents all of the three EMT-level transport agencies and the three non-transport agencies. And then, of course, Commissioner Philios representing the county. All of our system partners, I kind of went through these already. I'll just highlight the bottom. We in-house provide critical care-level transports. So Cootney County EMS does two types of transports. When you call 911, we come, emergent. And then we transport you based on your needs. If you can be cared for by an EMT, there's an EMT in the back, they provide your care. If you are presenting with a disease process that requires a paramedic, the paramedic's in the back. BLS, ALS. EMTs are BLS, paramedics are ALS. When we get into non-emergency, we also handle all of the inter-facility hospital-to-hospital, hospital-to-nursing home, hospital-to-hospice, hospital-to-home, out-of-area, all of that. Again, we have BLS non-emergent, we have ALS non-emergent. Then there's another level for the truly sick patient. Usually, patients with ventilators, it's critical care. We employ an on-call critical care staff that works directly for KCMSS, and they get on an ALS ambulance. Them and the medic make up the team that transports that patient. So that is the only actual service, direct service provided to a patient that takes place at a KCMSS. Besides, myself, Division Chief Geilenfeld, and Division Chief Higgins are all paramedics, and we do back the system up when we run out of paramedics. We do run calls in that situation. This is, I'm a numbers geek. I used to have Rodney's job, and it's a lot of numbers, and it's sort of where I feel comfortable. So I fall back on numbers whenever I can. Snapshot, the beginning of this is information that you probably already know. We ran 15,723 patient encounters last year. We were off last year. COVID drove our numbers down. We average 43 responses a day. That's busy. Across 90% of them are in the three ALS departments agencies. That is, ambulances are moving on a regular basis throughout the county. The next two I put in there because when we talk about comparing ourselves, it becomes very important what your poverty level and what your median income is. Obviously, the higher your poverty level, the lower your median income. More EMS, EMS is a safety net for people. The higher your median income and the lower your poverty level, the less EMS utilization. So as we compare ourselves, which we do on a regular basis, those two become very important because it's very hard to compare yourselves to systems. Those two numbers are much different.
This is county-wide.
This is county-wide.
And this is, so people understand, how come my bill's so high or...
Correct, this is county-wide. Everything you're going to see today is based on county numbers. Busiest time of day, don't get hurt at 12 o'clock in the afternoon. Don't get hurt on Thursdays. Those are two busiest days of the, the busiest day and the busiest time. Busiest month is August. That probably surprises no one with the increase in the amount of people who are in Cootney County during the summer. About 50% of our patients get transported ALS with a paramedic in attendance, about 48 BLS. That really does not meet the national norms at all. We do many more ALS transport than the national norms. And that is secondary to the retirement population that we have.
So chief, just for the benefit of people that might be listening in, by ALS, you mean advanced life support?
Advanced life support or paramedics.
Okay. And B is basic?
B is basic. EMT or BLS is basic transports.
Got it.
Number one call is cardiac, just to be the throw-out there. And then about 1% of our transports are CCT. We run about 10,000 emergent transports and about 5,000 inter-facility transports a year. So we stay hopping. I think it's important, obviously, as chief and as the person who has to defend what we spend and talk about what we spend our money on. I mean, obviously, our money goes towards paying for people to provide the service, but there's a lot of stuff that we have to get just to stay functional. And this is a short list. A good thing, bad thing, with COVID, there was some money available through grants and all so we could replace some things that we needed to replace without dipping into tax money to do that. But these 10 things were all things that were purchased this year, and there's actually more than 10 of them because there's multiples of some, to address either COVID or to address better care the patient provided. We bought three aeroclave devices, and they were directly for COVID. You put disinfectant in them, you put them in ambulance, turn them on, and they disinfect the ambulance in three minutes through the air. You close it all up and do it. Those are things we had to purchase for COVID. We purchased seven auto pulses, mechanical CPR devices. We are currently running a study in Cootney County to see if that purchase is improving our CPR outcomes, and do we need more of those? And I'll tell you, I'll give you a highlight. The answer is yes to both of those questions, but... I thought it was important to have each of my divisions present information. This is a lot of stuff I've talked about already. Tracy talked about the partnership in here and the billing process. I think something that's important is when we talk about billing, we're going to talk about what billing really does. 80% of our billing goes to contracted agencies. We can charge as much as we want. Medicare pays what they're willing to pay. Medicaid pays what they're willing to pay. Large insurance companies, who we have got to contract with, pay us what they're willing to pay. So even though our rates, I would argue, are not that high, which is when we get there, raising our rates doesn't do a lot for us because we are still contracted for 80% of what we get. We are, majority of our income coming from fee, user fees, very small portion coming from taxes. The taxes basically keep everything on the road and all the equipment functioning, all the meds purchased, all the equipment that's needed to provide the care. And the user fees go to the actual provision of the care. So, it's a very nice split right now. Tracy talked about our funding sources, the ambulance revenue, the property taxes that we've already talked about. You can see a 19, 20 comparison. And the 19 is the blue, 20 is the red. And Tracy and I are holding our breaths right now because we are in the middle of where the world fell off from under us last year as far as call volume goes. Hoping the call volume rebounds since we're in a different phase of the COVID crisis. And then our revenue statements. We get into the support division discussion. We drive 277,000 miles a year. And we've had one accident, there's 200, one significant accident, there's 277,000 miles a year. I'm pretty proud of that. We're safe in what we do. And the single accident we had wasn't necessarily our fault. So, I'm pretty happy with that. There are lots of things we do that if you actually read through all of this, you'll go, well, that doesn't make any sense. Why we buy this, that, and the other thing? And it's purely to meet the federal requirements and the state requirements that we follow. We do central supply. We go, we have a sophisticated process to get supplies out. Central supply is three years old and we've cut almost $20,000 from our supply budget going to central supply. And my last one is my clinical services division. And as you can see, clinical services likes numbers. This is, we track 492 pages of numbers a month. This is a very short list of that. As well as, we work with the county's GIS to plot all of our calls so that we can see exactly where the call volume is, how long it takes us to get to a call, and where we need to go in the future. So, this is just a very short, these are more the sexy numbers that people tend to like to look at. More importantly to me is the numbers that, how clinically we do with patients. One I'll point out to you on page 22, there's a unit utilization. And this shows all of the units that are in service in the county. And this is a way of looking at, I, I will overly simplify it, but this tells you the percentage of time a unit is on a call in a 24-hour period. Point five is that unit is on a call 100% of the time in a 24-hour period. And you'll notice we have several units that are .35 or in the high .2, 5, 6, 7 area. Those units are on calls about 70 to 80% of the time they're on duty. The rest of their time is writing reports. So, we have several units that are right there near their mats. That as we look at segways, talking about system enhancements, we're looking at two things. We need to replace our fleet. We're working on a way of accomplishing that. We also need to put additional unit on. I don't need a unit full-time, 24/7, 365 because on Monday nights at 3:00 a.m., you are so protected in Cootney County with the ambulances, it is not funny. But at 5:00 or 5:00 on a Thursday or Friday afternoon?
Good luck.
Good luck. I could use at least one more ambulance. So, we are looking at how to add additional staffing in what is called a swing car or an ambulance that is staffed during those high-volume periods of time. And as population continues to grow, that will slowly morph itself into a 24/7 ambulance. Those two issues, that ambulance replacement and that new ambulance are tied to each other because I need more ambulances to put a new ambulance on. So, this is our focus for the next couple of years is how to move the system to where it needs to be to support those two things. You have a real exciting, the clinical geek giving, other real exciting piece of this that's coming out is we are setting up the system right now under Chief Geilenfeld. It will look at clinically what we do throughout the county. Instead of each fire department doing it, it will be countywide. So, that if you live in Athol, you live in Morley, or you live in downtown Coeur d'Alene, you're getting the same level of care by the same processes. And that care is looked at in the same way and improvements are made throughout the system. That is something we've done a little, but we are full war gangbusters in getting that done in the next year. My conclusion, I feel that this is a very dynamic system. It's an efficient system. It is a strange system. There's maybe two, three of these systems throughout the country that functions the way we function. But the beauty of this system is it allows us to deal with growth in a manageable way, which a lot of EMS systems do not have the abilities to deal with. We can, we can expand and contract as we need to to meet the needs of our agencies and to meet our partner agencies as well. We're in an excellent position to grow. We have some really exciting plans coming up in the very near future. And probably most importantly, we are fiscally stable and fiscally conservative with our money to make sure that we're getting the most out of it we can. And that is the overview of Cootney County EMS.
Wonderful. Questions for Chief or Tracy?
I have a couple.
Yes, sir.
Can you explain the process that led us to distributing the units throughout the fire departments? Because it was, well, we were in a critical situation prior.
So, this is near dear to my heart because this is my second time working for Cootney County EMS. The first time I worked for them was in 2000 when they went bankrupt. The system was a third, was a third service government entity. The employees actually work for the system. They actually function under the system. The fire departments just run fire trucks, as what we call quick response units because they can get there faster because there's more of them than our ambulances. When the system went bankrupt, the fire department stepped in and they said they take the employees and they would contribute some of their own tax money to get the system up and running. But they, they did not want to deal with the ambulances, the equipment, the billing. They wanted a oversight KCMSS agency to do that. So, that's where KCMSS came from. It was Tracy and a chief at that point. They got the system up and running. They got the system out of debt. They got the system at the point where it could support itself. As we went along, the fire departments realized everyone held an EMS license in the county. So, KCMSS held a transport license through the ambulance district, through the three of you. But everyone held their own. Because of the strides we've made in the, the stability that's come through KCMSS, we now hold one EMS license. Everyone is under KCMSS's license. We have one set of protocols. We have one medical director. We got rid of all those lines and divisions that were out there so that KCMSS functions as a county service, even though the employees belong to the fire departments. And that's a, a shared thing. They get them to use as firefighters when there's a fire, but I get their QRUs to use for medical calls. Most fire departments run 85% medical and 15% fire. So, I'm pretty happy with the agreement that we have. It also keeps me from having a huge reproducing the fire departments, personnel departments and things like that because they deal with personnel issue. We deal with the licensing issues around those people. And we have an fair and excellent working relationship with fire departments in dealing with personnel.
Sounds like you have a very continuous level quality of care by doing that.
We do, we have an excellent level of care. And there's multiple people making sure we have an excellent level of care.
Wonderful. One final question. In your planning process, have you made any assumptions regarding growth, population growth in particular?
We have made some assumptions in population growth. So, a rough estimate is every house produces 14 point, I'm sorry. Every 100 houses produces 14.1 EMS calls. So, as I look at the projections for the county growth, I can project out call volume from there. Of that, 61% of those calls result in a transport. So, KCMSS is in an interesting position. We have to respond to every call, but only 61% of them create income. And of those, that income varies depending on who the payer is. So, as we look at, as we deal with the problem of, it's just not call volume and unit utilization that makes us look at when we need another unit. It's also the number of buildings being built, the number of residential structures, how many calls we know they're going to produce for us. And more importantly, where are they going? Because right now, our deployment plan is based on the GIS data, where people are, where our call volume is. But of course, where buildings are going now is where those holes are. Because we don't have call volume there because there's nothing there at the moment. That's where our planning for the future comes in. As we look at the number of houses going in, where are they going in? That next unit needs to go so it supports the population that's moving into that area. There right now is just an empty field somewhere. But there's 500 houses going in. So, now there's four times 14.1, and I refuse to do math in public. So, that's going to increase the call volume in that area by that amount. So, yes, we're looking at where, where the county's growing, what the population's doing, and how the population's changing within our known areas, within Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls, and Hayton. It's pushing further to the north. It's pushing further to the south. As we look at long-term, right now, Spirit Lake, Timberlake, Morley get paramedics, paramedics from the core, from Coeur d'Alene, Cootney, and the Northern Lakes. Eventually, we know as our ALS volume goes up in those areas due to population, we're going to have to push medics out into those districts as well. And that's in that long-term plan. We can look at the numbers and say, here's the spot where we probably are going to need it. Now, let's back up three years and figure out how we get there so that we're not blindsided when we get there and we're doing this emergently. That's what I'm trying to get away from. Population growth has impacted EMS to the point where a lot of stuff we've had to do is emergent. And I want to get out of that. I want to get out of a plan. We have all the numbers. We just need to apply the numbers and develop the plan based on those numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly.
Any other questions, Leslie, Bill?
Excellent job.
Actually, just one, but it's more of a personal question for me than a commissioner question. When is life flight notified? So, everybody's on the ground. And then, when does that happen?
So, the units that are responding to the call make the decision whether or not to put life flight on standby. That means they're warming the helicopter up and all of that. Once they get on scene, they evaluate the patient. We have three categories for the use of life flight. If we have a ground transport over 30 minutes with a patient that has a significant injury or illness that they cannot be managed in that 30-minute transport, or we have multiple patients that we are not able to manage by ground. And then there are certain situations. Major car accidents on 95 at Granite Hill with six patients, we're launching life flight immediately because we know it's beyond our capacity. The chances that we have significant injuries are, are most likely on 95 or on the freeway. So, there's some where, the caveat to just about everything we do is paramedic discretion. If they hear something that makes them think launch, we use them more in the Morley area and on the east side of the lake because of the transport times are so bad. We use them in the woods a lot because it's not good to bounce a patient down forest service roads in the back of the ambulance. It's easier to fly then. But those are our standing criteria to use life flight.
Now, when you use life flight, what's their capacity? Can they take multiple?
One patient.
Oh, one patient.
But they have helicopters in Sandpoint, Spokane, Pullman, and Lewiston. So, it's rare, but it's not unheard of to get two or three helicopters for a specific situation. We've had multiple crashes on, up on 4th of July where we've used multiple helicopters. The problem with life flight is they can fly about six flights a year. Because of our winters, they just can't fly. So, a lot of times, we need to do every, we need to prepare and we, be prepared and we train to do everything by ground. Because you never know if you're truly going to get a helicopter.
Yeah. So, January of 2003, biggest snowstorm. My boy couldn't use it. So, you guys had a CCT, I'm just Spokane.
Yes. At the CCT level, that's 911. At the CCT level, there is a whole lot of, of huge, large amount of holes to go on that as to who does what. We do not inter-facility unit at all with CCT. It is a highly specialized, highly equipment variable population. Life flight does them all.
You're talking about critical care transport.
Critical care transport.
For people who are watching, not, not everybody knows what CCT is.
I'm sorry. Inter-facility at the level that this patient belongs in an ICU. We are transporting them in a portable ICU.
Okay. So, that's what happened to my son.
That is what happened.
Because they couldn't get life flight.
Because they couldn't get life flight. And then, there's a lot of them that we do because people are sick, but they can be managed to sacred car. They can be managed to wherever they're headed by ground. Those that can't be managed by ground, that are so sick or they require machines that we don't carry, that we're not capable of managing on ground, that's when life flight's involved. Or when we're tied up, or when they're tied up, or when they can't fly. We'll take some of their patients. They'll take some of ours when we're tied up and can't handle the call. We have an excellent, non-combative relationship with life flight, which is highly unusual between a ground ambulance service and an air ambulance service. But we support each other and we know we need them and they need us. And that's the way it functions. But yes, they were tied up, so we did the ground, CCT.
Got it. Anything else for Chief or Tracy?
No, I have five, 22.
So, let's, let's move on and talk about rate increases. And Tracy and I will actually share this one. I'm going to give you a little bit of background before Tracy takes off with her numbers. And then, I'm, I'm going to come in behind Tracy after she gives you the numbers and show you where we stack up in the state because I think that's hugely important. We, our last rate increase was 2019. Rate increases happen not to make more money. And I know that sounds crazy. But Tracy will explain to you what this really means monetarily. But rate increases happen because we need to stay level in the Medicare system. What is coming to EMS is something you've probably seen at your doctors or if you've been at a hospital recently. Medicare has changed their paying model to pay for performance. Meaning, you need to justify how much it really costs you to provide the service. And then, they reimburse you what they want based on that. Instead of a flat across-the-country reimbursement model, they're going to more a localized, what does it actually cost to provide EMS? Mainly to help those super rural areas that do six calls a month and can't survive. Because our rates are based on what it costs us to provide the service, even though it's not really a monetary, it's a very small monetary increase to Cootney County EMS, it's hugely important to keeping us in, matching where the rest of the systems are so that when Medicare looks at what it costs us to provide the service, they're looking at a real number instead of a number that we just haven't moved because we know it really doesn't mean a lot to us. And that's hugely important in all of this. And with that, I will let Tracy talk about her numbers.
You want to get close to the mic, please, Tracy? You have to pull it all the way in. Go ahead. No, pull it in closer and closer. Yeah, you need to get within a few inches.
How's that? Better?
Nancy? Okay. Yeah, she's got it.
So, as Chief Keely has talked about our revenue, we really do about, one-third of our revenue each year comes from property taxes and two-thirds of our revenue comes from billing for service. So, billing for service is the side that we want to talk about. And we're going to be proposing a 5% rate increase. And we've already taken that to the Joint Powers Board and they approved for us to bring it to you. But I want to talk about what does a 5% increase really look like? So, I have a, a slide up here that shows gross revenue budget for the current fiscal year, which was $9,133,000. Keep in mind that we only collect about half of that. So, our true net revenue or collected revenue is really only about half of that. So, a 5% rate increase on that $9 million would bring in an additional $456,000, almost a half a million dollars in gross, gross revenue. a half a million dollars in gross revenue. So then right below that, I show you what the payer split is. You'll see Medicare, Medicaid, Blue Cross, commercial, and private split. So Medicare makes up 65% of our payer mix in this county. Medicaid is another 13%. Blue Cross, who we contract with, with another 7%. And then all other commercials are 10%, and our private pay is 4%. This is important to note, because the three top ones, Medicare, Medicaid, and Blue Cross, will not pay us a penny more regardless of what we charge, and we cannot pass that on to the patient. It's illegal. So of those three categories, and I split out that mix of the half a million dollar increase, you'll see it'll generate a clearly zero amount of money. The commercial split, which is about 10% of our payer mix, will produce about $31,729 in collected revenue. The private split, which is about 4%, will generate another $2,777 in collected revenue. So out of a half a million dollar rate increase, our net collections will go up about $34,500. So we are very restricted in what we can do to increase our revenues, both on the property tax side as well as on the rate increases. And it is important, we're going to be, it looks like we are going to lose more money on our property taxes this year if the proposal is, yeah, is signed by the governor today, and, you know, we need this additional revenue to try to offset some of that loss. So on the following page.
It's actually our front page, yeah.
The actual rates. You can see what the rates were and whether they'd be going up too. And we would need a public hearing by the VOCC if you want to report with this.
Okay.
So to give you some focus or some idea of how Coopney County EMS fits in with the rest of the state. So this is Tracy's rate increase information. So when we talk about BLS, the EMT transport rates, there are 27 EMS districts in Idaho. The rest of the state functions mostly on volunteer, non-taxing entities. Of those, you're looking at the ones that provide ALS services or paramedic-level services within the state. This is with our, if you were to approve our rate increase and decide to take it to the public hearing, this is what it would be. Now, this is last year's rates on all those other agencies, because I don't obviously know what they're thinking at this point. We would, on BLS emergent, we would be in the lower half. The Idaho average is $675, we would be at $642. On the non-emergent, the Idaho average is 590, we would be at 586. So we would be below the average and in the lower portion on both of those. ALS, we're on the lower half, the average is 902, we would charge 837. ALS emergent, the average is 1,049, we would charge 948. So we're still going to be well below what even the average is. So this is an interesting, this is something that I would really like to talk to you about because I think it's important to understand. We do not, if you charge 911 and we do not take you to the hospital, we do not charge you unless we have to expend equipment. So if we do an EKG on you, we recoup our costs. If we have to do an IV, because you're diabetic, we have to do an IV and give you sugar, we bill you for that. Other than that, we come out, we assess you, we give you our opinion, we treat you, and if we don't transport you, we do not charge you. There are systems in Idaho that do charge. We charge ALS, we charge $224. So if we have to expend equipment, you get a bill for $224 flat rate, no matter how much we do. Idaho averages do 76. On the other side, you can see that our systems that charge, BLS, drug release, we do not. So we charge mileage. On top of our base rate, we charge you mileage. Though we're at the top in the mileage, the difference is so minimal, we're 49, 39 cents from top to bottom. It's not a huge amount. Again, mileage is dictated by our three primary payers. They do not pay that. They pay what they've chosen to pay. So Medicare, Blue Cross, and Medicaid, no one pays that amount of mileage. And then we charge a non-resident fee, because we are one-third tax-based. It was our opinion that if you don't pay taxes, you should make up that. So on it, we charge $111 across the board. You take that BLS rate, that ALS rate, add $111 to it. If you get an ALS bill with a $111 non-resident rate, it works out to be the tax on that and $800,000 hassle to the county. So we have covered, made sure that we were well covering our residents when we're treating non-residents. This is probably the most important thing. This is the tax levy rates. We are second from the bottom, and ADA's going up this year. We will probably be tied with ADA County as the lowest levy rate in the state for ambulance districts. This is not all that's up there, the ALS, because I didn't have enough room to put it, but we are the second lowest EMS taxing district in the state. Besides Gem that doesn't charge, or Lewis, or the city of Lewiston that doesn't charge. Lewiston is a true fire-based system, so they collect money through their fire taxes for EMS. They don't collect EMS levies separate. And Gem County only has one ALS, one ambulance provider that covers a small portion of the county, and the county does not allow them to collect county-wide ambulance levies. They can only collect in the area they protect. So we are the second lowest levy rate in the state for ambulance districts. To keep that and to continue on that, and to keep us current with the state, to keep us current with the feds, so that we could continue to show the feds what it costs for us to provide service, so that when they start to look at paying us based on what it costs us to provide the service, we need to keep our rates up and where they should be, but not get outlandish. I think we're staying right in the middle of Idaho. We're below the average for every one of our rates, and then we're very low in the tax levy. And I think that allows us to, coming back to my last line of my report, we're conservative with our money. We try to be fiscally aware of what we're doing and how we're doing it, but yet still continue to provide the level of service that people expect. So what we're asking for from the board is to have a public hearing to approve our rate increases, so we can put them on the books for 2020, 2020, 20, the 2022 budget year. Budget here's driving us. And I will be happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions for Chief or Tracy? Okay. So you're looking for direction?
Yes, sir.
To proceed to a public hearing?
I'm fine with it.
You got it.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Well done.
Great report.
Well done.
Thank you.
Do you expect the public hearing to be well-attended? Should it be a night issue or just part of our 2:00 p.m. business meeting?
We have never had the public show up at any of our budget hearings ever. I do not expect there to be a lot of interest in this.
Is it part of our August one like usual, or this has to be separate?
If we could do it sooner, that would be better.
Yes, okay.
Okay, yeah, because we typically, we do it in August in conjunction with ours, but that's okay.
And I really, two reasons. One, I really hate, because the fee increase is separate from our budget requests, and we need to do more in the background to implement the fee increase with our billing company than we do. If, whenever we come in with budget, that doesn't affect our billing company because that's tax money. This affects our billing company. They need to get everything done to have it ready to roll by the beginning of the budget year.
Okay. So then will you also be presenting in the August meeting as well? Because that's where you're going to be presenting the budget?
Correct.
Okay.
I will be presenting the budget in the August meeting.
Okay, this is simply for the fee increase.
This is simply for the fee increase.
Got it. Okay. Any questions for Chief or Tracy? Hearing none? Public comment? None. Okay, 11:04, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.